Okay, we are late, but we will call a meeting to order. It's Tuesday, October 26, 2021. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes of reports received and filed. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
As always, Management District Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow. Must be end of month, pretty slow Saturday. Lincoln has his home game Saturday, I think, at 1:00, so if you do that before you go trick-or-treating.
We have trick-or-treating uptown Saturday.
There, you could do it before then, go to the game at 1:00.
This day at noon, the Patriot Day Committee is going to wrap up the project. On Friday, I have a meeting with Luke Holzschneider of Jeff City Regional Economic Partnership.
Okay, tonight I have a National Guard ESGR Leadership Zoom. Tomorrow, I think we're finally closing on our lot over here. Thursday morning, Eric and I are going on K-WAS. And then Friday, I think Nick and Bill Farr are going on K-WAS. And then, let's see, Friday morning, Chamber of Leadership. Monday, I'm going to introduce Nick at the City Council meeting that evening, so that's all I've got. Okay, bids and contracts, renewal of the childcare health consultation contract.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is our annual renewal for the child healthcare consultation contract where we go to healthcare facilities and talk to them about health-related topics. They'll do like the handwashing demo with the kids with the gel that glows or sunscreen, just any health topics, and then sometimes we'll also do classes for the providers. So this is one of those contracts that is no longer with Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services when they made that office of healthy childhood. It moved to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So none of the processes will change, but the DSC is the contract holder instead of MoDHSSS.
I'll offer a motion to sign the contract agreement with Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And call it. Child. Let me just go over here. The renewal of the child healthcare consultation contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to jump around a little bit because Debbie said we should because we've got our Zoom at 9:30, so. Do we have any unfinished business?
No.
New business, we're going to go to approval of purchase of replacement bed for tandem truck.
So truck number 273, it's a tandem with over 106,000 miles. The bed is rested out. It's a safety issue. We would like to purchase this stainless steel bed. It'll be installed by our mechanic shop with the new hoist that we got that is in, and we're getting it set up. Steel prices for stainless steel are going up about 20% first of November, and we need to get this one ordered now. If we paid out of our parts budget, it's with Henderson Products, and the cost is $30,575, and we just need approval and signing of the quote. Any questions?
Do we add it in the budget?
Yeah, it comes out of our parts budget, which includes replacement beds as money allows towards the end of the year, as we see there's some money available. If these things are able to be done, try to do them. So we ordered the other bed about a month or so, month and a half ago, and now we have this one.
Yep. You got a contract or?
It's just a quote, and it's got a signature on it.
Eric, are you purchasing off the cooperative?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. It is Sourcewell contract, so it's cooperative procurement.
Okay, y'all good?
Yes.
All right, make a motion to approve the purchase of the replacement bed for the tandem truck from Henderson Products Incorporated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
She needs signature on this.
The last pickup.
Autograph, please.
Okay, yes, sir. Okay, then we are doing the approval of pre-order of F-350 crew truck.
So last year, we ordered two of these trucks for our crews, our crew supervisor to drive, and this is the third one of three, and we had to put it into next year's budget just due to funding. We needed to order this now because of shortages on vehicles that everybody's seen. Macon suggested that we get this in now if we want to see it next year, and so before you, I have a, I guess it's a quote. It didn't really have a signature line, but I put a little line there for y'all to sign. This would be out of next year's budget. It is a, it's on the state contract, and it is $40,078, and it's a cabin chassis. Wheels decide, once the truck comes in or a little closer to coming in, what kind of bed to put on. It'll be a flat bed. We'll either purchase a bed and put it on, or we'll make our bed ourselves with our shop. We'll make that decision into next year, but we need to get this truck ordered now in order to be able to see it.
So do we know when we'll see it next year?
No.
Okay.
Best case scenario, probably mid, three quarters way through the year, but we just don't know. We have to get it in now if we want to see it at all next year, that's what they suggested. And it's with Macon's Ford here in town, and then the cost again is $40,078.
We're probably going to have a lot of this coming around. We're after order stuff ahead of time.
That's, it's on the state contract, yes, and yeah.
Just going to have to remember when we approved the budget, it's currently in there, but you can't cut it out. You've already.
Well, that's where I was going, what if it doesn't get budgeted?
Which? We did that with the Grader earlier for next year.
I don't think this is a problem, but it is.
Um, I think if you're going to continue down this path, we probably should start pulling money from contingency to encumber that because those encumbrances will then roll into next year's budget, so you make sure that the money is there.
Okay, that's what I was kind of wondering, if we needed to encumber some money now, or if it makes a difference if we're going to approve it in budget. But this doesn't feel like it's going to happen.
The list of remembering what has to be included in the budget is getting longer by the day, so.
Well, we've never seen times like this either, so I don't care what we have to do, but I think we need to get it ordered.
There is a line on there. I know it doesn't satisfy this issue, but there is a line saying payment will not be due until 2022.
Yeah, but signing this, we're saying we're in it.
Committing to it.
Well, we just withhold it from Eric's salary if we don't have it in there. I mean, that's, that's each simple.
Might be a better deal for him. The truck would probably be worth twice as much here about a year. So I, I just, I guess I just wanted to make sure we know this is coming up, and we're going to probably have to deal with it.
Why not?
This isn't the first one, I guess, that we're buying ahead of time to make sure we can get.
I would expect these issues to carry well into next year, maybe the following year, too.
Well, we're having the opposite of things that we have in this year's budget that we've ordered and put in place, and they're maybe not going to carry by the end of the year, so you're going to carry it into another budget cycle as well.
Yeah, these are just unique times. It's.
We can always sell it to another county and make money on it if we, right?
Don't tell our guys that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the pre-order of the F-350 truck from Macon's Ford, state contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, approval and sign of FY 2021 SHSP Protection of Soft Targets Crowded Places Awards Document. That sounds ominous.
It does, it does. I have, I have two here, and so the soft targets grant, that was applied for in the beginning of the year for ballistic protections, whiteboards, I believe is what they are, four of them, and that was on behalf of the school resource officers, the sheriff's office. So as soon as we can get that, that's 100% grant, so no money out of our pocket at all. As soon as we can get that signed, they'll start the ordering process, and then we can get that to our school resource officers.
Yeah, I wonder where that cost us anything.
So is this signed to the application, or is this?
This is the award letter.
Yeah.
Contract.
Yeah, this is just the award letter that, you know, we've already applied and been given the money. Or I'm sorry, we've received the ability for purchase, yeah.
Okay, so it's not the purchase contract?
Debbie, this one will need a board order.
Okay.
So do we want to do that? Or do we get to sign the letter? Accepting it and then the board order?
Yeah, I would accept the awarding of this grant.
Okay.
I'll offer, excuse me, a motion to sign the award letter with the Department of Public Safety for the 2021 SHSP Enhancing Cyber Security Local Preparedness Award Document.
That's the one down below it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm above it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure I gave you the right document.
The Soft Target Crowded Places PSTCP Award Document.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we will go for approval and signing of FY 2021 SHSP Enhancing Cyber Security Local Preparedness Awards Documents.
This was also a grant that was filled out earlier in the year, and it is for rural fire departments to have their computer systems in their vehicles upgraded. I believe the old ones were falling apart, and so this gives them, again, it's, it's another grant that's 100% paid for, so with its approval, it would then go to those fire agencies.
You're just young for only being here a couple weeks. You're doing really well, Nick.
Well, I wish I could take credit for that one. I wish I could, but that was previous to me coming here.
Yeah.
Motion to approve and sign the FY 2021 SHSP Enhancing Cyber Security Local Preparedness Award.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Health Department Wastewater Treatment Systems Violation.
Okay, so yeah, I sent an email yesterday afternoon to you guys as far as, but the, this is one of the, one of the ones that an individual's got, their system is flowing on to neighboring property. Been back and forth with this individual quite a few times, talked to Jill some. I mean, this person is in bankruptcy, but the bottom line is, is that there's, you know, there's been a complaint. We followed up on a complaint. The complainant has, has checked in a couple times and getting a little aggravated that nothing's being done. This guy acts like he's going to try to resolve this, but with bankruptcy issues that he had to talk with lawyers and stuff, but at the end of the day, we still, I've told him, need to get a soil evaluation done and, and get a permit application in with a, with an installer to actually install, you know, a certified installer to actually get a system, get his system corrected, and that hasn't happened yet. So I'd, I'd probably like to see something to where the commission, you know, requires this within 10 days, and if not, then we possibly cap their system to where it's going to just back up into their house, his own, his own house, and that should, you know, that should make, force them to want to get the system a little bit more. So anyway, I mean, basically, it's like if your septic is plugged, then it'll get into your sewer lines and, and you're not going to want that odor and stuff because right now it's going on to somebody else's property, and it's been doing that for, for months.
What are our options with respect to fixing it and just adding it to the property tax? I mean.
Jill might have more explanation because I don't know how much, you know, how long that would take for one thing. I mean, you know, we want, and we've been asking to get, to, to get process, you know, something in the process already, and, you know, now recently, the individual has acted like he has contacted a installer, but then when I tried to verify that with the installer, he said, well, he had me pump out his tank about a month ago, but that's been it. It's like, okay, well, that's in, you know, that's not the way I heard it from the, my last phone call, which was just, you know, a couple days ago. So anyway, just kind of, it's, it's one of those where people act like they're going to do something, but they don't do anything until you force them to do it, and so that's the way I see it.
So Jill, if we would cap it and it backs up into his house, are we opening, I mean, is somebody?
This is, this is the abatement process, and they give a notice that this is what we're going to do, and this is what the consequences are going to be.
Okay, so if it backs up in the house, we're not liable for?
No. I mean, everybody, you think, you can always be sued, but this is our abatement process, and they're well aware of what happened, and they refuse to do anything about a system that's leaking sewage into, onto their neighbor's property.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a public health hazard.
I know it has to get fixed, but I'm uncomfortable of, of forcing sewage into a citizen's house. I think we, my preference, and I don't know if we can do this, is to fix it and charge them for the fixing.
But you're going to get into some other issues that they filed for bankruptcy already.
Well, that's true.
Bankruptcy doesn't affect any, any debts acquired after you file though. And from what Joe said, he filed Chapter 13, which is reorganizing and coming up with the payment plan for your debts. The issue is, Todd doesn't have the money. So what's going to happen is, I don't know how much we spend to fix it, so you put it on his tax bill, he doesn't pay it in three years, and then we sell, Larry sells it when the court out steps. But the other issue, too, is I don't know how much it costs for all of that, or if they would even have to put in a whole system, but you're going to get into a pattern of, you know, bankrolling people who, you know, pay out.
You probably need to come up to the table, Jill, so we got the microphones, just so we have all this on the recorder, please.
Okay. If you start down that path, and you're, you may have a lot of citizens thinking, I don't want to spend the money to fix this, the county will just do it.
Well, but we don't do it for free. It's, it's a debt on the property. The property will always carry that debt.
They get a three-year payment plan.
Well, I'd rather see a three-year payment plan than a three-day sewage running into somebody's house, and, and we could have avoided it.
Well, that's kind of where I, I am. I just, I.
Well, Joe, it's the process.
If we went, went the abatement process and said, you know, what's the timeline for the abatement process? How quickly can we notify them? How, how quickly do they have to do it? How quickly can we fix it and put it, make it right?
That's negotiable for, with you. I mean, as far as, the thing is, is from my standpoint, we just need an application to start the process, and, and that's what I'm, I mean, if we don't have that application and something, and then, but then also have, you know, possibly 30 days for actual work to have started, you know, 10 days to get an application in, which basically means that there's a soil evaluation that's already been done, and an application filled out by a certified installer, that's, I think that's reasonable. And we, in my opinion, you know, that would force them, if they agree to, or, you know, if we do that, if the commission does that, then they should be in, in step to get a actual compliance system, and that they negotiate, and they get to say who the installer is and how, what kind of system is, they're going to pay for versus us doing it. And, and I'm not saying that's not a bad idea, it's just, I don't know how complicated it would be, you know, under those circumstances. The chapter, Chapter 13, the way this guy describes to me, is that he, it's really somebody else makes his decisions on the money. It's, it's, you know, he's not the one making the decisions, the way he explains it.
Well, there's, there's a plan that you get through the bankruptcy court, they come up with a plan for repayment of your debts. So that's what he's following. I mean, if it takes up everything he has, then he doesn't have the money. That's, I think that's where he's coming from.
Yeah.
One thing to consider, too, is, you know, the quickest thing is for the homeowner to go ahead and get that permit application, get it fixed. If we have to fix it, we can't just pick a registered installer. We'd probably have to put it out for bid and see, you know, and we don't know if, can the system be fixed, or do they have to install a new one?
Probably a new one.
Ideally, we would want the homeowner to take the first steps because if we do it, then we have to invoke all of our processes because if they have to put a new system in, then we're going to have to put it out for bid. That takes time. We can't, you know, we can't show preferential treatment to one installer over another.
So how quickly would you cap his then, if, say you do that? And I, I don't, dumping raw sewage on, on somebody else's land, I, I don't like that either.
What if we said that, you know, we would, you know, expect them to get a permit application into us, since you guys only meet, you know, every two weeks, you know, give them 10 days or whatever, and then at the next commission meeting, we will come to you and say whether or not that permit was in hand, and then we could make the decision at that time whether to cap it. That way, you don't feel like you have to make that decision now, and we give them time to get that application into us because that's what Joe was suggesting, 10 days, but you will meet in 10 days, so.
And we would let them know that boringness, that we would cap?
Yeah, and they could even come to that next commission meeting and be like, you either have to have a permit application into us by such and such a date, or you show up here. That way, they have, you know, just like we do other abatements, they always have a chance to come and talk to you.
What's the downside of starting the clock running on a, on an abatement process? And, and we can always stop it. If we start the clock running, you've got to fix this at, and whatever, whatever the rules are that are already there in terms of notification, time, and all, we start that because this one's got to get fixed.
Right, yeah, and that's why I'd say give them a timeframe to get that permit. That's starting the process.
Whatever the abatement process, Joe, I mean, when we, if it was something else, if it was the tall weeds or the rat, harbage, is that the term we use, anything else?
We like to use that.
That covers a lot of territory. So whatever those rules are, let's, let's turn the clock on. We could always turn the clock off if he's, you know, starts jumping through the hoops right away.
The question is, this abatement is a little bit different because are you talking abatement, cap the system? Because that's, that abates the problem. That stops the sewage from flowing onto the neighbor's property, and that's what we do. We, you know, we cut the weeds, we, we stop the problem. But the other issue, thing that we could do to abate this is to fix the system, and that's different. So that's why I'm saying, give them 10 days to get that permanent application in, and then at that time, you guys will make the decision of whether we cap it or whether we fix it.
Okay.
Is that fair?
What's fair is to treat the adjoining property, to, to fix it for the adjoining property, but for us to take a step that, that not only, quote, abates it, but creates a bigger problem because they're going to have to move out of the house, and.
Not necessarily, but.
Well, if the sewage is.
They have to stop you.
Well, I guess if they.
Pump it, pump it to, you know, pump the tank out, and then that would give them more time.
But you know, the guy that pumps that, pumps that out likes to get paid.
Okay, well, yeah, but not as much as a system. It's not going to cost as much as a system.
Well, if you're already in Chapter 13, maybe there is no money to pay, the pumper.
Yeah, that's why this is a difficult, I mean, this isn't an easy.
That's why we're letting you make the decision.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm going to be on record of wanting to start the abatement process as if it was anything else like weeds or harbage or mosquitoes in the swimming pool, any of that stuff. What we, what would we do? Start the process? We can always stop it.
Yeah.
And this shows that we mean business. This has got to happen, and if he jumps and starts jumping through the hoops, great.
Yep, that's what we would want.
Yep.
Okay, so go ahead and put on the agenda for two weeks, give them.
And we'll give them 10 days, but in two weeks, we'll meet if it hasn't started.
Okay, do you want a motion for that?
I don't think we need a motion.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and we got three minutes before we go to the Zoom, so I don't. We can do the lobbying service discussion.
Accounts payable.
No, Debbie said, anything with a check, I hold.
Oh, yeah.
I listened to Debbie.
Is this the new web app, Debbie?
Yeah.
What's that? There's some glaring there. Oh, it's.
Oh, it's wheeling.
A chirp.
Hurts, man. I'm right here. Everybody's got pulled over.
Need you a cowboy hat.
What's that?
Over here?
Ryan, do I have to do anything? Is that started? I don't see any options. I don't forget that one. Do I have to do it through my calendar? Or I can just start it here, right?
Did you send it to us, too?
No, I sent it to Krista just to test.
Send it to me. I want to test it.
Was yours on the right time, though? I sent my first one, and it was like Eastern time.
That's what she did first.
No.
See, Krista, you can do, we'll be able to do this.
I sent the first one for the next hospital. Like I said, mine was set on Eastern time, so I sent it, and I'm like, no, not seven, no.
So what, have we set a date for the next one?
Yeah, I, to the, you should have the appointment.
Aye.
You guys color?
Have I reversed it?
Okay.
These guys are going to start getting heated.
Did you not, let me know if you didn't get it, Tam, because.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see it on.
Look on your calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, because I can't figure out how to, how do I get one of her? Do you have it? Okay, good. I was going to say, make sure. I sent to everybody, my favorite one.
Are you in the meeting and how your?
Send me an invite.
I don't know how to do it. Yes.
Yeah, tap it to the agenda. I'm surprised you don't have one with the sheriff's card or something.
It's reversing.
Oh, we got it on the inside.
He's under cover.
I don't see him.
Is she on the right in the meeting? Are we on the right in here?
Oh, she is. I thought she said she.
Maybe you're.
No, I'm not. But we should.
She might have joined the room and not.
Did you join the room and not?
No, I'm talking about us.
It says she's on.
Says she's on. She's, suddenly goes out and be back in.
Okay. Maybe I didn't get that right. We'll stay there, Teresa. Let's see if we can find.
Let's do, let's do meetings.
There, join now.
Well, it says 10:30.
It's Eastern time.
Why that switch back? Are you or would she?
Let's do, uh, go home. Let's just do a meeting. Start a meeting. Tell her she received another invite.
Teresa, how about you get another invite? Can you, um, tell Julie, please?
You're going to send a new invite?
Yes, to.
Okay.
All right. Just you and Julie. Is that it?
All right. And Danny.
And Danny. Okay. We'll see if this works.
Yeah. I hate to be the IT guy, but if you joined the meeting that was scheduled, she'd be in there. If that's where she is, regardless of the time.
Oh, try now.
This lull that we have right now would have been good if we had pie.
I agree. Breakfast pie is the best pie.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying, we should start thinking about maybe bringing pie in our commission meetings.
Oh, they're not in, they're on the right meeting or something. Give me three.
Your email or did you get it going?
No, it's your email. They were on there.
They're on?
They were not.
You need their email?
Yep.
Okay. Here's one. Did T and then her last name.
There are just those two?
And this Danny guy. Of course, he's got a hyphen.
So.
Just, I never wanted to. Let's say it's, it's Wood or Dean Wood.
Yeah. They should just got an invite. That's me.
Tracy, you should have just got an invite. You may need to send it to Danny. You guys use Wood that much? Yeah, Julie should have. But you may need to send it to Danny. You don't? Well, it's pretty easy for them to start and put it on a board.
Call countywebex.com.
Does it show you're in? Yep. She's in my personal room. She read that name. She has to be seen.
She has my little pretend that. May I take a minute to catch up over here?
Do I need to hit an extra join meeting?
There you go.
There you are. Okay. We see your name anyway.
And Danny.
And Danny. Julie?
I don't think Julie's going to be on there. She doesn't.
Well, she said that she changed her mind that she was going to go.
Now we got Danny. Now we had Danny.
You guys hear us?
Can you hear us on the computer, Teresa? I'm going to hang that up.
You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
There we go.
All right. You can hear us too, I guess.
Ah.
Morning, everybody.
There we go.
Morning.
Nice to see everybody today.
Yes. Well, we are sorry for the technical difficulty again. We are ready for you guys whenever you're ready.
All right. Um, and did you get the information that I said?
I did either.
Debbie and we have proposed that to the commissioners.
But you have it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, Julie, they do.
Perfect. So, um, first of all, um, I am going to be on the call for about 20 minutes and then I need to jump off. But, um, so Teresa will, uh, lead the rest of the call. And I just wanted to introduce Danny Martinez. Um, Danny is one of our managing consultants in our public sector group that's been working extensively with various public entities related to CARES Act as well as the new American Rescue Plan. So, um, we're glad to have him on the call. And I'm just going to, um, jump in, um, and talk through some of these things pretty high level. And then a lot of the detailed questions that you all had mentioned, Debbie, I know when we talked originally, um, I think we'll be able to cover that with Teresa and Danny. Um, before I do that, I just wanted to stop for a minute. Is there anything other than this specific topic that y'all wanted to cover? Just so we're able to leave enough time for that?
No, not really. I think we just needed a jump start here. So that's, we're looking for your all's guidance. So.
All right. So what I've done is really kind of just summarized at the top there, you'll see the overall funding objectives for the American Rescue Plan. And this is through, um, what's called the Coronavirus State Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Um, and so with that, obviously it is to prevent, um, the decrease, or to prevent this spread of COVID-19. Also, we'll talk a little bit about lost revenue, what that means from Cole County. Also talking about the focus on stabilization of the economy with households, small businesses, nonprofits, and then continuing to address public health and any type of economic challenges, um, that have impacted both the public entities, you know, as well as, um, nonprofits, businesses, as we've talked about. And so with that, the pursuit is which for Cole County, you have very broad flexibility. Um, and as far as I know, the final ruling has not come out. Is that right, Danny?
Right.
So, you know, we're still in those interim rules. Um, and so there'll be some things, um, and I'm going to steal one of your phrases, Danny, where you're pretty safe going right down the middle of the road, things like infrastructure, water, sewer. Um, and then there's some of those areas that, you know, you might want to kind of think about those before the final rulings come out. But I'll let Danny touch on that, um, as well. So then when you think about the, um, five major categories that we want to think about, um, all of these different areas and how they're going to relate back to the American Rescue Plan, is in some form or fashion, it needs to support health, uh, public health expenditures. It needs to address the economic impacts, um, which if that could be households, businesses, any type of industry, and obviously, um, even the county itself in terms of being able to support the infrastructure to the community, any type of lost public sector revenue. Also, we need premium pay for essential workers. And that could be, um, you know, the first responders, any of these critical infrastructure. And then as we've talked about, and I know it's been, um, you know, pretty broadly discussed throughout the community, is water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So whenever we're thinking about, you know, something eligible or allowable, is really tying it back to those five areas. Um, the county does have until December 31st, 2024 to obligate the funds, to commit those funds. But then, um, the spending guidelines are with reporting, they're able to spend through December 31st of 2026. So let me just stop there before getting too far into the details and see if you have any questions on that.
Nope.
Don't see any questions right now.
All right. Um, so now, um, you know, this I feel like is kind of where we get into some of Danny's expertise. So one of the things, Danny, we were talking about with Kristen and with, um, Debbie and the commissioners, um, is really thinking through how to calculate that revenue loss. Um, maybe what's the best way, some things that you've seen in your experience?
Okay, great. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um, so we'll, we'll touch on this idea of lost revenue, uh, first. And the reason that it is so important is, you know, where you're looking at that handout that you have in front of you, and you see that, um, to replace lost public sector revenue, what, if you determine that you did lose that revenue, it opens it up much more broadly as far as what you can use, uh, the money for. Uh, it says, if you calculate that loss of, loss of revenue, then you, you can then, um, use the funding for what's called provision of government services. And, you know, that's basically almost anything, right? Like any, anything that you're all, are doing to, uh, perform the operations of the, you know, the county government. And so what we're seeing is people are being able, are calculating this and then using it to fund things that you would otherwise have funded the government. You know, if you're trying to kind of in, increase, um, your, you know, make up for the shortfall that you may have experienced, or purchasing things that you might have been able to fit it into one of these other buckets, but it definitely would fit under the, the idea of provision of government services. So how to calculate this? The, the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, has put out a, a very good tool based off of the interim guidance. Um, if you do not have a copy of it, we can send you over, uh, a copy. And what you, you're, you're doing effectively is you're looking at the first, or the, the last full year before COVID. So in, in, in your sense, it'd be, uh, 29th, uh, calendar, your calendar year, right? Calendar year 2019.
Yes.
And you're looking at that as your base year. And then you're going back three years. And I don't, I don't, the, the form does it really well for you, but just to give you an idea, you're going back, looking three years, and you're looking at our revenue, what was our growth rate? 17, 18, 19? How, how were we trending as far as what's called general revenue? And then what was, looking at our revenue, um, for the first year after COVID, so looking at it at, um, calendar year 2020, was there a shortfall there? Did the growth rate decrease? And so there could be in the, in the guidance, they're allowing you at least a 4.1% growth. So if you, you're saying, oh, I didn't have it, and we were still moving along fine, uh, we didn't really experience it. We still encourage people to go through that calculation and input the, the numbers just to see. Because if you can fill, if you fill that out, um, what that'll do is let you know, okay, is this bucket, uh, an option for me? Uh, because that bucket is, is a lot more, um, flexible. So it's, it's calculated, what's called general revenue is calculated, uh, it's a sense, a census data, data definition. And you're basically excluding, uh, utilities, you're excluding federal revenue, and you're including a lot of the other stuff. We don't have all of the answers yet as far as what is in and what is out when you get into some of these maybe one-off items. Like we had a, a entity here in Texas where they had a, a windfall one year of like $15 million or something. And it makes it look like they didn't lose any revenue. So we're, we're trying to understand, okay, that extraordinary item, is that in? Is that out? Um, but the, the guidance that we have out there, the GFOA tool that's out there, does a pretty good job as far as what you have from the, or, uh, the interim guidance. In addition, the, uh, frequently asked question documents that they put out on the Treasury website, uh, it's about 42 pages. And the last page is a really good chart that shows, okay, these are all of the sources of government rev, that governments receive revenue. If it's green, that means you include it in the calculation. If it's red, that means you, you don't include it in the calculation. And it gives a list of a lot of different types of revenues, um, that you would need to include. There's still some questions out there as far as, uh, at what level, am, am I calculating this? Do I need to bring in, if you have like component units, for example? Um, thankfully for you all, you're on a calendar year end. They are asking for it on a calendar year end. So those governments that are not calendar year end are having to do a little bit more work to figure out, um, that period because they don't have a financial statement that matches up with that period, which shouldn't be an issue for you all. Um, but those are, that's generally how to do it. And, and there are tools out there to at least get a sense, take your audited financial statements, key in the numbers, and see where you land, uh, on potential revenue loss.
And Danny, I think, um, if I'm not mistaken, you've been able to kind of review in some cases, some of the different public entities. If, if that's something where Cole County wanted you to maybe just take a look at their calculations, see if there was anything glaring that they might be missing.
Sure. Sure. Yeah. I mean, what I could do is provide you all the, the tool. And if you wanted to start inputting the information based off of your, your financial statements and send it, send it over to us. And you can take a look and just see if we think that you put everything in the right bucket. Let you know, uh, like in that instance, I told you of the thing that was a little bit unclear, let you know if we see anything in relation to your revenue sources that is unclear, that could significantly tilt the lost revenue calculation. Uh, but that, but as you're thinking about what you're utilizing it for, if you're not, get set on utilizing it on one of these other items that's very easy to justify, I would recommend at least doing that calculation. I love it. My camera's blinking in and out. If it gets too bad, I'll, uh, unplug it.
Any, any questions just at a, um, a level for Danny?
Well, I'm, I'm anxious to see the, uh, the template or the, uh, recipe for the calculation is, and as I understand it, even if the revenue did increase, but didn't increase the four point, was it nine or one, four point?
Four point two.
One.
One. Yeah. If it increased 3.9%, there's still some, uh, difference there that would fall into our, to our benefit.
Right. You're, you're assuming at least a 4.1% growth rate. So that's the floor. If you all had a higher growth rate than that year over year before COVID, then that would be what you would use. So they're giving you at least 4.1% from base year to the next year.
Got it.
And so then another, um, item that we wanted to touch on is premium pay classifications of employees, um, how we think about calculating that. So Danny, what have you seen in that area?
So this is one where the language is a little bit loose, right? Like, there's some people that you can tie, okay, yeah, they definitely were, to 2020, you're like the first responders, or people that were, you know, that were not able to work remotely, that were really on the front lines. So those ones turn themselves to be a little bit easier for premium pay, but when you're looking at the definition, you know, they're talking, they say essential work for those that were in critical infrastructures, regularly performed in-person work, interacting with others at work, physically handled items by others. They list out explicitly some sectors, healthcare, education, childcare, transportation, sanitation, grocery and food production, public health and safety. But then they also say, you all as a local government can add additional sectors, so long as the sectors were, and they say, quote, considered critical to protect the health and sa, health and well-being of residents. So a lot of governments didn't really go home, as much, government employees didn't really go home as much as others weren't able to work remotely, right? So you all were working in those congregate settings last year or the last 18 months when others were able to work from home. So what they're saying here is, if you're wanting to make the argument that more of the general purpose government type employees should be eligible for premium pay, you'd want to be able to explain why they were essential workers, how they were at higher risk or more, you know, they were unable to work from home, and to try to justify it that way. So there's some, there's some that are pretty clear, there's some that you'll want to do a little bit of working to state the case. I will tell you that that's the question as far as, you know, general purpose government employees, is that something that we can do? That's probably going to be answered at some point more explicitly than they do now. Right now, they're saying governments have the discretion to add additional sectors if you thought that it was critical to protect the health and well-being of residents. So if you all showing up to work every day and doing what you had to do to get that coronavirus relief funding out, for example, was important because that was helping to achieve the mission of public health, you know, that's where you would go to try to state that case. And that, the one other thing to point out with that, all of this money is forward-looking except for this. This is the only thing where you can go back to the beginning of the pandemic and kind of give it as a bonus, or, you know, a payment for time already work. And they have parameters around how much you can provide, it's $30 an hour, or up to $25,000. Some entities are interested in this, some are saying we want to get it out of the community really. The good thing, the good and bad thing about this is that it's handled at a local level, right? So you're getting completely different utilizations of the exact same money based off of local need.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
Right, and so, I'm going to jump off here, and then I'll circle back with Danny and Teresa to be sure that, you know, we're able to connect back with you. We'll go through, I'll let them talk to some of these other questions. One of the things I just wanted to mention, and we'll go through the assessment, but one of the things we can do is, if we see, whether it's rankings, or whether it's questionnaires, these are just some typical items that we've seen included. So we can kind of think through those, because I know you had mentioned that you wanted to do that potential needs assessment, so I'll let you talk to that. So I'm going to jump off here, but Danny, just in terms of, one of the things that the commission had talked about is possibly working with the city, some infrastructure and what that would look like, so could you touch on that as well?
Sure. I mean, I think that's, that's a great idea, if you all can work together with, you know, in areas where you're serving the same, we have a entity here in central Texas where the county and the city are doing just that, they have some public health facilities and mental health type of things that they, they want to do, that they, it's serving the same communities, so they're working together to be able to kind of split their money so they're not all funding the same organization. So we are, we are seeing it especially where you have overlapping communities and just a good work relationship between the governments, that, I mean, definitely allowed. Before we jump further on the premium pay, was there any questions that I can press right now?
Yeah, nothing, Carrie.
I'll mention this, perhaps the feds say you can look back, but we have a state constitution that says you can't do retroactive pay increases, you have to look forward. So we'll have to get past that inconsistency.
If you're utilizing this, yeah, this funding, it does say that you all can do it, I agree, you'll have to look at the state regulations, and I'm sure people have asked, so how, if those two things contradict each other, how you're allowed to do it, maybe because it's specifically with these federal funds that you're allowed to?
It's constitutional, it's a regulation.
Also, it doesn't, it can be wages or other remuneration, so if there's other ways that you wanted to, you know, wages, straight pay, you know.
I'm advised by our attorney that it's not a statute, it's the constitution of the state, so it's, it may be not possible to go past that.
Okay. Yeah, when you all get into legal matters, I'll not step out of the way, you know, that's not, that wouldn't be my area of expertise, I just can tell you what you can utilize as far as the guidance, the federal guidance for these treasury funds. The, what types of public health initiatives are we seeing others engage in? The different thing about this funding than the previous funding is it's a little bit more forward-looking in not only to address the needs of the COVID-19 pandemic, but also the waves and the things that occurred because of the COVID-19 pandemic, right? They get into a lot of the things about substance abuse, mental health, building stronger communities, you know, those types of things, or just preparing for a future pandemic, right? The previous funding said, hey, this needs to be, for this current COVID-19 pandemic, this one, you're seeing it allowed to, you know, to be a little bit more prepared the next time this comes. So as far as public health initiatives, you're seeing the vaccine stuff, you know, vaccine things, testing, public, you're seeing some infrastructure projects around public health for the expanding facilities for mental health or substance abuse. One of the questions here, asked about EMS stations to serve underserved populations, and that's really the other thing beyond it being forward-looking, that is, if you read the guidance that this administration is focusing on, is this idea of equity and providing the funding to those that are, were most disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. So if you're thinking about these types of projects, if you're able to link them to a benefit to the underserved community, and how that will expand resources, like the one I'm thinking of, they said, well, yeah, all of our clientele is Medicaid patients. To be able to expand this, our footprint by, you know, additional 5,000 square feet, we're going to be able to serve and treat more of these types of individuals, provide them with more mental health, more different types of access to healthcare. And if you can link it to the idea of equity or those disadvantaged populations, it makes your case a lot better. In addition, on public health and elsewhere, this idea of evidence-based, so if you can prove that what you're doing is supported by evidence, that is a big deal. So some of our entities that are looking at this instruction or infrastructure type thing, you know, they're wanting to expand their waiting rooms, right? Because they couldn't do the whole six feet distancing with COVID-19, they wanted to expand their employee break rooms because they couldn't utilize them because there wasn't enough space. And so what they're saying is, we lived this in the last year, the last 18 months, we did have to shut down, we did have to not allow people to come in, we did experience a decent decrease in traffic because of our current footprint, our current setup, therefore, if we do X, Y, and Z, if this were to occur again, or another wave would rise up or whatever, we would be better suited to not only manage it, but to handle a larger capacity. Also seeing that with courts, and I'm not sure if you're, there's, you have an issue with court being backed up, but some courts had to close because the setting or the setup for the facilities were such that you couldn't operate in a COVID-safe way, and so they're doing modifications, one for spacing and social distancing, but also sometimes making them more ADA compliant, and maybe they have some buildings where they weren't ADA compliant, and this is a way to, how about those types of communities through those types of projects as well? So those are just some of the ideas, you know, if you just look at the news articles across the country, there's a wide variety of ideas and thoughts out there, but those are some that I have seen personally in our work.
Quick question on that one? Yeah, quick question on the ambulance topic. Are we allowed to combine federal ARPA money with state CDVG funding?
If you're going to utilize it for a purpose that is allowable for both? How is? Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're, if you wanted to utilize the funding for something that's allowable under that, when you said CDVG, and that's another one, we have it on the next slide, the portable housing or housing program, which is another one that we see of ARPA.
So do we have to get approval from CDVG to do that? Can we, I mean, will they let us leverage federal dollars for federal dollars?
Can you help me understand a little bit more, so make sure I answer quickly?
Well, like, if there's a match or something on a grant, do we have to get prior approval from them to use ARPA money to fund that match?
I don't know that answer 100%, so I'm afraid to answer it here. Let me look, and then you find out for sure.
Okay.
When you get into matching the federal dollars, I don't want, I don't want to tell you something incorrect, so let me double check on that.
Okay. But if there was no required match, you could use both sets of funding to fund the same project?
Right, so if we only got a smaller portion of CDVG money, we can use ARPA money to fund the difference.
Yes, I don't think, I don't think there's a restriction on that, as long as it's not a required match by one funding.
Correct, and they allowed, last time, to utilize this funding for the FEMA match, but I don't know, I haven't seen anything specific this time with any type of use for match. But initially, I was answering, can we use it for things that, for more federal things, but not to supply any type of local match?
Thank you.
We listed out some other ideas for y'all to think about, I'm sure you all have already thought about it, but the idea of stabilizing the county operating budget, that is to say, if you had that loss of revenue, when you utilize it for provision of government services that you were already going to use it for, in fact, what that does is allow you all to have to not use the normal money that you're generating from revenue for those purposes, so that helps with some stabilization there if you had that. We didn't touch on nonprofit and small business support, but that is another one, and this guidance, it talks about industries most negatively impacted by COVID-19, hospitality, travel, tourism, so if there's anything that you all wanted to do in relation to that, you know, or things that you're going to do to try to get people back visiting, those types of things could be utilized, talk about small business support, or building and building other things already in place, so those are just some ideas. And that is, that's what I have on the agenda. Teresa, on the typical needs assessment, do you want to handle that one? And if, I guess I'll open up first, do y'all have any questions about, that I can answer in relation to these types of things?
No, we have had requests, the library would like to apply for some money, and I know, looking at the water sewer, Public Water District Number One, about once a month, they checked back with me. So, you know, we've got some people that are kind of lined up, waiting to apply.
Right.
I know our medical director at the Co-County Health is concerned about the mental health of our citizens and our children too, so I don't know how, I don't know how we address that, but I think that is an issue, so.
So I think the next topic that we kind of wanted BKD to talk about was doing some sorts of needs assessment to determine, or help us determine where we want to spend the money and what broader senses we want to assign dollar amounts to. So they're going to kind of talk about what that needs assessment would look like, and what kind of questions we would ask, and how we would rank different things. So I think Teresa's going to talk about that one.
Yeah, so I think Kristen and Debbie, you guys talked to Julie the other day with Matt, and talk about needs assessments and things like this. So, you know, there's different ways you can do needs assessments, you can do a survey, you can send out some mailers, or maybe have a public forum or something like that. So these are just kind of some ideas, the rankings related to, so just kind of, I don't know if this is in order, but seeing, things that we're seeing that communities are basing a lot of their spending or what they're thinking they're going to spend it on, so, I mean, we've touched on a lot of this already, Danny's already talked a lot about this, but, you know, that mental health piece is there too, and just what the community is thinking that they, they are going to want to spend this money on.
So within the guidance, you know, it talks about getting, having community involvement, right? That's like one of the pieces in there. What that means and how you all approach that can be in varying fashions. Just acknowledging that if you, depending on how broad you cast your net, you know, it sounds like you already are having some people have things that they want to use for. If you're casting your net broad, that you want to be very conscious of actually, you know, responding to, or at least addressing the feedback that you receive. I do have some entities that did do that survey monkey type of thing, and it actually became a little bit more stressful than not, because, you know, there was a lot of community outreach that they had, they had to comb through and go through, and then if they were to go a different route than that, you know, that's, then you have to kind of explain it. Another way to do it is to reach out to community partners, so reaching out, having some type of forum with small businesses and the nonprofits and different entities and agencies that can kind of give you the pulse of the community and the pulse of the needs. Be doing some research as far as the impact, you know, you were talking about the hospital talking about the mental health, so I'm sure that they have some good data there as far as the objects they have had in relation to that. So I guess it varies as far as how you will want to come at this, do you all want to take the lead and have things that you identify? Do you want us to help facilitate some of these types of discussions? There's different ways that we can go about the, you know, we can put together the template for the ranking, put together questions, there's different ways that we can kind of go about doing this.
What do you guys see? I mean, do you want to put it out on the county website mid-November, give the public so you know what the needs are out there, and give them a chance to respond back with BKD's help to get that out there? Do you want to do, are you thinking of the forums? Not that you have to answer these questions today, but it's just giving a start to where you want to start. Again, like they were saying, to come up with how much money in each pocket do you want to put, you know, how do you want to, how do you see this going?
I think it'd be a good place to have an advisory board.
I think it'd be a good place to have an advisory board, or somebody, community partners and such in this area to set the priorities and kind of set some rules.
That's probably.
We've seen it where, you know, you identify initiatives, like, okay, we're going to, we're going to have, just like COVID, like the, the guidance you have has been divided by buckets, you all lay out your three, four, five sub-buckets, or you're, you know, these are the things that we're going to do with the, the funding, and then start to develop or identify programs or items you'd like to pursue within those different initiatives. Because you are going to have to report on what programs or what projects and expenditures you, you all are utilizing, and how that then kind of met, met the goal as far as, you know, a little bit more performance-based than just reporting out on what you spent. You'll, you'll want to be, be able to put it into, you know, buckets that make sense as far as what, what is the most impactful, and what is the biggest need in your community.
I think appointment of an advisory board is a decent first step. We might ask the public for volunteers before we, we start picking them, so I'm not sure how to do that, whether we do it through a website, do we do it through a press release?
I think you could do a press release that there's an application on the website or something. If you wanted to put, just like you do for other boards, that they'd have to go out and fill out some sort of application. Because if you wanted to focus in and have particular members of the community, so you want someone healthcare-related, someone public safety-related, so you could kind of give them the opportunity to tell you what their background is, so you have a more diversified group on the board.
I think we've got other community leaders and such too, that can kind of inject their pulse of what's going on in the communities. And, I mean, just between us three right now, we could go down and rank all of these, and we probably all have a few of them that were at the top and a few of them that sink to the bottom, but I think the ones kind of in the middle and separating the buckets out is going to be the question.
I think, Pam, are you all thinking?
I, I wouldn't get a big, I'd say, I'd, I'd say 10 or less, probably, because, well, that's what I was thinking first.
Five, two.
Well.
Go on.
The two hospitals just had to do their community health needs assessments, we'll be able to look at them. They sent it out to their partners, because they had to do an abbreviated version this year. So two needs assessments that are already done.
But I don't necessarily want somebody in here going, whoop, I just want to be on here to rank mine at the very top and make sure that it gets points. I want somebody that's going to come in here and kind of look at it. I mean, it's so subjective right now. And I, there's, a lot of people have also gotten buckets of money too. So some of the small cities have and stuff, and, you know, if we do something here, we're going to have to do it over there too. So I, I don't know, I think as much input as far as ranking this stuff would not hurt, but I agree with having too many on a committee.
You can get up and down.
I mean, we could do five, we could do six.
I don't know.
I don't know, I just.
Ultimately, you guys will make the decision from that, whether you get it from the public and you do an application, or you get a group of people together to kind of help you with that. Ultimately, it's your all's decision.
And you need to decide what, sorry.
Would you like her to help moderate those discussions? We'd be happy to, to do that if you, if you'd like, or at least to sort of sit in and listen, if not, you know, whatever you, whatever you think our, our role should be.
And I think you need to decide what you want that group to do. Do you want them more to help on the front end and, and help with what does the application look like, what are the main priorities and stuff, but then have it separate of them not actually ranking applications, or?
Oh, I don't, I think, I'm thinking out loud here, so bear with me, but I, I think we want to know from the community what their priorities are. When it comes to, it's going to get too deep in the weeds when you're, when you have two, later have two applicants after the same dollar. That's, that's probably a choice for the commission to make, as opposed.
Right, so I think, yeah, I think you clearly need to tell that advisory group what their, what their job is.
Yeah, so they are an advisory group.
We, we may be able to cross some of these things, you know, we're A through, A through P here, items, and that's not exhaustive list yet to begin with, but then we could probably line some, I don't know if Cole County has a lead remediation issue, I don't know, it doesn't seem like, that's more in the big cities with the older pipes, right? But, and if, and even if it was here, it's a, if it was in Jefferson City, it's a, it's a privately-owned utility that this government doesn't have ownership in.
It's a profit type thing.
Yeah, so.
I see it more as helping us rank it. It doesn't say that it's eligible or not eligible. Okay, you got this pot of all the people that are eligible, and then we come in and we rank them, and I think it takes a little pressure off maybe us three to where we have the other input on it, so. I, I don't know what the magic number is, and I think the more you get in there, the more diluted it's going to be, but I don't know how you decide which five, or eight, or 12 it would be.
I think we would, I don't, lots of things we see as a, Jefferson City makes up half of the county, so perhaps half of the committee would, or the advisory board would be city residents, and half of them non-city county residents. I mean, they would be county residents, but not within the corporate city limits. We can, we can work on that, just to get a broad spectrum of the community.
Do you guys have any more questions for BKD at this point?
Just, this is a quick one. I attended a County Commission Association of Missouri Western District meeting last week, and one of the gentlemen there said that the original, the original rescue plan had something to do with infrastructure, not necessarily broadband sewer water, but had other infrastructure pieces in it. Then there's some thought that they, it dropped out, it became, you know, they, they reduced it to just those other three maybe areas. Have, is there any discussion that, that they would tweak that to bring in other infrastructure? Anything going on there?
Great, so to answer that question, in the interim final rule that we're currently working with, we have that water, we have different ways to, to do infrastructure. You have the water sewer problem. If you have a, if you have loss of government revenue and you want to do something with that bucket of money, you can do it as long as you don't enter into debt, you just, you know, pay go funding for, for different types of, of items that's, you know, like, as long as provision of government services, which is pretty broad, so you have that bucket. But then when you get outside of those two, there's a lot of people, one, asking, can we do other types of infrastructure projects, or frankly, starting these infrastructure projects and linking them, or tying them to a need within the, the community? Those, I'm, I'm hopeful that in the addition, you know, whenever we get the final rule, we will get that answered with a lot more specificity as far as the, the other infrastructure projects, or any other capital projects. We'll tell you other ones that I'm seeing is, you know, like upgrades to parks or outdoor venues, and what they're linking it there to is, we all know that COVID spreads less outdoors, we didn't have a lot of outdoor spaces in our community that we go to, we have more that'll be more beneficial. If you're able to put those in underserved areas, that even strength is a little bit more. The modifications that current to public buildings there, so not new buildings, modifications to, to old ones, there is congregant settings, it's another thing that I'm seeing now. But people are wanting to do more with this funding than that, to address, you know, other infrastructure needs within their community. I would think that whatever happens with this infrastructure bill and reconciliation package will have some type of impact on what happens with the, the leniency within this funding. So it, it hasn't been addressed specifically. You can tie it to public health, or tie it to underserved community, or tie it to building stronger neighborhoods. There are ways to tie it, you just have, it's a little bit more on the edge right now than, that hopefully with the final rule, it'll be clarified better.
Do you guys have any?
So potentially we could use, like on the juvenile attention center, because that's our, I'm just thinking of some of our properties that serve the public.
Do you guys have any more questions for them at this time?
Not for me.
No.
Well, we, we appreciate you guys being on the call and helping guide us, and we will let you know the direction they go, so.
Okay, great, and, and, you know, with, with this, we can be, it's, you can have a lighter hand or a heavier hand. If you feel like the, the amount of guidance and assistance that we're providing, you need us to be a little bit more involved, we can do that, if you need us to step back, because you all, you need us to be there for the broader framework, we can do that. So I want to make sure that, you know, there's different ways to do this thing, so I want to make sure you feel that we're providing the appropriate level of, of support, direction, and guidance that you need. So if you, if you have any ideas on that going forward, just please let us know when we can modify it in, in those ways.
So I got one more final question, just for clarification, on the premium or hazard pay. If we do it across the board for everybody that came to work, or do we have to pick winners and losers if it's someone that really didn't come in contact with the public, but still had to be here to serve the public, is that going to, going to apply, or are we going to have people that do not qualify?
It goes back to you identifying those groups that are, were critical to protect the health and wellbeing of residents. So if you think that that is everyone, and this is why you're saying it is everyone, because they had to come in five days a week, and that in and of itself created a, you know, a higher, heightened risk to them, that you think that they needed to receive some of this, this premium pay for, that's how you would go about explaining and justifying that, state constitution aside?
So if we can.
And that's probably another area where you might get an additional explanation, because right now they purposely kept it to people that were, vectors that were critical to protect the health and wellbeing of residents.
I mean, they're coming to work because they have to. So, I mean, I guess if I say it's okay, then it's okay.
Unless you're outvoted.
Okay, so if we say it's okay.
I guess.
Then it's okay, and, and we can justify it, saying we, we needed them to come in to work, I mean, they.
Well, but here's the, here's the rub here, we, we have a constitution we live under here, so we, we can't be looking back for this, we have to be looking forward for this.
No, I'm going totally forward, so.
Right, yeah, that, so, you know, it, it's difficult for me to say this person needs extra money because of what they're going to do in the future and their, and the risk that they're incurring as a result of that, but then I find out that they went to, the following week, they went to a football game with 50,000 people there. So was it really that difficult to come to work and be exposed to, at work, when you're exposed to 49,999 people at your choice a day after work? But I don't want to get too far down those weeds. I, I think the lowest hanging fruit here is the replacement of lost revenue, because whatever we can carve out of, of the big bucket and move it over to that bucket, that gives us complete flexibility with that. So I think that's, we have to have some templates and spreadsheets and a few other ways to work on that calculation, looking at the audited financial statements in the past, to get our history, to see, I don't think we're going to, we weren't growing enough to have a bigger number than the 4.1, that's going to probably be our cap, but we can work under that and see if.
Kristen and Debbie, do you have a GFOA template?
I think that I do, Teresa. I think I just shared it with our treasurer, but I will double check. If I don't have it, I will email you.
Okay, sounds good.
Is that the template that you guys recommend? I, I know there's a couple other ones out there, but so far that's the one that looks the best.
Matt, to me, that's the best one that matches up with the, the treasury FAQ, that thing that I put, that last page that I told you of the green and the red. I think that's the best one.
Okay.
Well, we will let you know, and we appreciate you being on the call with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we want to put something on the website to get feedback from citizens?
Why don't you draft, why don't you draft, well, let's see, draft a press release with a, what we're going to have on the website, just start a draft going and circulate it.
And that be to form a citizens committee?
Well, we're going to call it, I think advisory board is a good terminology.
Yeah.
We'll come up with something, we'll start that, and then you want me to continue to put this on the agenda?
Yeah, that's.
Or is coming to keep the ball rolling, or?
That's a good idea, at least an update as to what's happened in the last week.
Okay.
Anything else on ARPA, or go back to our agenda?
Back to our regularly scheduled show.
Okay, then we will go back to new business accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable, we just have a few.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number 21.
This is for $119,382, this is the health department, and this is the final reading of the grant.
All right, make a motion to approve the court order for $119,382,000 for the general fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval and signing of the 2022 holiday calendar court order.
So I'm not sure if you guys, if that was attached or not, do you need a copy of it?
No, I have it.
Okay. We have two different calendars now, we did change EMS in March of this, this year. So we did talk to Eric about that, and he was okay with that. I know I had attached the state holidays for 2022, all together with their after Thanksgiving that they normally get, they have 14 holidays. What I'm presenting to you on the majority of the holidays, on the one that does not say EMS, there are 12 with one floating, so that would be 13. But we do designate the day after Thanksgiving for everybody but the EMS, actually in the field workers. The administration of EMS would follow our same holidays. So the only really change is, we did add the teen holiday there.
Yeah, the June 10.
Eric, you, you step in. Eric, you, you stepped in to your seat after an adjustment was made. Do you see that as the right adjustment going forward?
I think the biggest thing is that on holidays themselves, you know, we have to motivate people to, when we have holes or, you know, need extra staffing on those days, that there needs to be a little bit of enticement there. So one thing that we just did clarify is that when we are paying the increased rate, it is on the holiday itself, not the government-recognized holiday. So if July 4th is on a Saturday, we pay the increased rate on that Saturday, not on Monday when the holiday was observed. But I do feel like this is probably the best solution to augment our staffing and, and make sure that we're staffed on the holidays. From an administration side, I have no problem following the, the set counting holidays for all of our exempt employees.
So we've added, we added thanks, the day after Thanksgiving Day. When did we add that? Is that 17 or 18?
It's been.
We added Columbus Day back in. We've added Juneteenth Day. At some point, we added the floating holiday. I think we did that instead of doing Columbus Day, but then Columbus Day got added back in, so.
So you took away Truman and Lincoln.
Truman and Lincoln.
You took away Truman, Lincoln and Columbus Day.
Then you added Columbus.
Then the next year, Larry Marvin raised hell about it. So you add it back in Columbus Day and a floating holiday.
Yes.
I mean, I'm fine with it, but I would probably get rid of the floating holiday at this point because we keep adding days.
So just to clarify, for EMS hourly employees, they will not be receiving the floating holiday?
And that is in that court order that does not say.
I'm not, I'm talking all of the, not just EMS. So in 2019, we had 11.
So at the end of the day, what's the difference between '22 and '21?
Teen.
Juneteenth. And we were notified at four o'clock in the afternoon, the day before this last year, which is why we didn't recognize it. Right?
Now, I'll make a motion, we do the holidays except for the floating holiday.
I'll second the discussion.
I think you guys should think about that. It's a hardship on families that we don't get the two state holidays when you have daycares and things like that that close for state holidays. So then you're saying that I have to work and I have to find daycare to provide for my child. The floating gives you the flexibility to take one of those days as that extra day and not have to pay for daycare and come to work. So just a family perspective and, and an employee perspective that that floating gives you some flexibility to at least take care of one of those days where you may not have childcare or something like that.
And we always have the problem with the state buildings being closed with the county being open. So that creates a problem for the prosecutor's office, for the public administrator's office, for our bailiffs that are paid by us, but yet the courts are closed. So it does create, not majority of our employees, but even, it does create a problem.
What year were those taken away, Kristen? Is that 17?
I don't, I don't have.
No, it was back when Mark was still here.
Yeah.
2010, we had 10 holidays, no floating holiday. And we've gone up to 2022 where what's proposed is.
We had 10, but we always got the day after Thanksgiving, but it was voted later in the year.
Yeah, right. But you never knew for sure.
Right. But it was pretty much a given, so we included it as part of the holidays up front. So people didn't have to question up until the week before whether or not they got it or not.
You also have vacation leave that you're accruing that you can use on them days. You know it's coming a year ahead of time. So I, I see what you're saying, but I just, we keep adding to it and, so.
I think an employee appreciates the holidays just as much as they would appreciate more pay. I mean, in some circumstances, when you're using your vacation and sick leave to take off when your kids are out of school or they're sick or things like that, you're not using your vacation the way it's meant to be already and now.
Wasn't us that added it? It's the federal government that added the Juneteenth?
They added the floating holiday?
You guys added that when you took away two.
Okay, I'm just clarifying that.
I'm just clarifying, yes.
There's a net loss of one.
Yes.
There's nothing saying we have to do it by the federal holidays. So we can have our own holidays.
My birthday in October instead of Columbus Day?
And when the mail doesn't run, the banks.
I'm sure they'll take it, Sam. So now you're, don't give them that idea. So you have Sam's birthday off.
Well, a federal holiday creates more issues than a state holiday.
It does.
Because then you don't have mail and you don't have the bank, so.
Yeah.
It takes away a lot of the other people that you deal with, just in a general day of business. Which is why Columbus Day pretty much got added back in.
Well, now it's Indigenous People Day. We're going to take that away, so.
So back in 2010, we really had 10 plus one, 11. It's practically, and, and right now, if we took the schedule that you've produced, we would have?
13.
13.
Yes, 12 plus the one.
Okay.
Yeah.
12 plus the floating.
Yes.
All right.
And the 12 includes the Juneteenth that got it added last year.
Right.
I would be good with just doing this and doing the floating day and.
Well, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
So you're voting no, so call the vote then.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor of Jeff's motion to accept this with no floating holiday? Say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Didn't see that coming.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the schedule as presented.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You might be the bad guy.
I know.
Why didn't we do this in close session so they didn't know? In this contract discussion or something? Contract negotiation.
Well, it's.
All right.
You, you, yeah, okay, keep going. Okay, we're going to, signing of the annual contribution election for SURF retirement for 2022.
Okay, since you're in a giving mood. I'm going over there. This is the annual 4% contribution that the county elects every year, whether to pay or not pay for the SURF retirement. And you guys have generously done that in the years. I would ask that you continue that.
I'm good. You are?
I'm good, yes.
I'm good, but I got a quick question. And it's not really related exactly to this, but how many of our employees participate in a sort of a voluntary deferral into there?
Well, there's quite a few.
I mean, just as a percentage?
Percentage?
Round numbers?
I think we're up to about 80 people out of the 390.
Okay.
So considering we have two retirements, it's pretty good.
It's a good, yeah.
I didn't mean to interrupt your motion there, Jeff.
Good question or pertaining to it. So I'll make a motion to sign the annual contribution election for SURF retirement to remain in effect during 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're down to lobbying services discussion decision.
We put a RQ out regarding the lobbyist services. We had multiple vendors submit qualifications, then the commission met in close session and reviewed them, did a couple interviews, and I think it's boiled down to RJ Sheeran Associates and we have a contract ready for them. They were doing 4,000 per month and that'll start in November and then expire in June of 2022. And then they'll have an option with three 12-month renewals. So if you guys are good with this, we can sign the contract.
Yes.
So we, when will that be released from the close session minutes? As that.
Oh, your vote on the contract?
Yeah.
Well, you're voting on the contract right now.
But on the vote to.
Sign the contract.
Award it to them, I guess, was in close session.
Right, but once, once the contract has been signed, then you can announce that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to award the lobbying contract to RJ Shear and Associates at a rate of 4,000 per month, beginning November 1 of '21. First period expires June 30, 2022, with three 12-month renewals optional.
I'll let you second.
Second. Any other discussion?
No, I'm just, my, my note on the original one was because of the amount of money. So it wasn't anything against who you picked.
Okay.
It was just the amount of money I think we should have negotiated, but, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Nay.
Okay.
I had my butt kicked today.
Yeah.
How many more are you going to do?
Uh, well, we're down to discussion of third floor cleaning and Greg just came in a timely.
Did we get that finished last week? The third floor cleaning, did we, what do we have on there for this week?
I added it for this week because I talked to Locke and I told him.
Oh, okay.
Just the timeline of the ductwork, the carpets, and then the cleaning. Um, it was also, he said he discussed it, that painting and taking off wallpaper in the offices. I know we didn't talk about that in here, so I wanted to present it. And if that was an option, we probably needed to.
Coordinate.
Coordinate that because we would want to do the ductwork, probably the wallpaper, painting, and then the carpets. But I just was going to throw that out there and if that was something you guys were wanting to do as well, then.
Haven't thought of that.
Locke and I have talked about that and I, and when he gave me a tour upstairs. It is 20-year-old wall covering, 20-year-old carpet. Maybe 20 years since cleaning some parts of it, or at least deep cleaning. So I was good with all of those things. But we didn't, we haven't probably discussed the wall covering or changing in paint versus wallpaper at this level.
It probably does need to be updated. I'd like to see some pricing on it first and get some bids on it.
We'll need to jump on that right away then because that's one of the earlier steps in the process.
And then we want to do it before the carpet.
Right.
Yes.
But we can get the vents.
But after the vents, yeah.
He gave me a time on the vents. He said December 11th and 12th. He just told me that yesterday, that weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, it's hard to get anybody right now with stuff. So, I mean, that's, that's the first thing you need to do. I mean, if your tub's overflowing, you need to shut the faucet off and then start cleaning it off. The other stuff can be done afterwards. I don't think that's got any, anything to do with the mold issue. So I guess, do we bid that out then? Painting?
We can bid it out again.
And do carpet? Or are you going to have somebody do it all?
You guys tell me.
I don't know, we're going to be able to get somebody to do it all, Greg? Or we better do the carpet and then do the?
Carpet, we can get the carpet off the state contract.
With your scrubs.
With your scrubs. They'll have to put it there. There is bookshelves on state contracts that I haven't been able to find yet. So we'll have to do that out. Make sure we've got a couple companies we can call to see if we can get them. They're busy too.
Yeah.
I'm hoping by Friday to have our bids for 209 and 210. Nick was here this morning and went through stuff. We just finished that report.
Yeah, I might have you give a report on that.
So hopefully he'll have it to us tomorrow. So that reports, everything what he saw found likewise. But yeah, if we're going to do the ductwork, we need to do the ductwork. Do we need to do painting? Do we need to do floors? Then I'll be able to do.
Okay.
Well, it's going to be left to clean. You got new floors, new walls? Ducks are clean?
Ceiling.
Oh, yeah, and then the ceiling tiles.
I don't think they're going to do anything to the ceiling.
No, but we can replace the.
Replace the tiles, sure. But I mean, at this point, if we're redoing the wall stuff.
Do you replace all of them?
All the tiles?
No, I think it's the one.
No, I'm just.
They already fixed the ones that were stained. Unless we've got some more.
Ceiling's done, then that's all I'm asking is who's, what cleaning are we going to have left to do?
How about?
New floor, new walls?
Yeah. But I thought there was something about cleaning all the bookshelves and the desk and computers and.
No, just dusting.
Pardon?
Just the dusting of the bookshelves, not computers. Wiping down the cubicle, like the tops around it and just generic dusting and wiping down.
So who dusts your office?
I do.
Okay. So the dusting should be done then. I mean, they take care of their own office on that, right? Right? No? Yeah?
I'm not, my people are not going to touch their desk because of hurt papers if something gets moved.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did we get rid of the couch? I think that was the, wiping down the couch.
The infamous couch. You know, we need to just stick it out front of the annex and.
Couches go there.
And our homeless, our homeless.
Before we get a call from the Health Department abating us.
We, we stick this city on New Year's Day.
So, okay.
I think that's where the cleaning came from though, was the growing of mold on couch and chairs and things, where somebody needed to come in and.
So maybe we just do the three other steps and then look at cleaning at a later time.
Yeah, well, we'll have.
So the commerce room, I mean, it's a common area. So we probably do clean some of those areas. Do y'all wipe down stuff in here? So I could see maybe.
A little bit, yeah. We don't touch your, our, when we do the table.
All right. Well, let's move with it. We can talk about the cleaning part later on. But what, do they want to keep the couch or what?
I thought that Locke said he was ready to get rid of it. It just needs to be removed.
You want me to rid of it? It'll be gone by the day.
He wants it out of there.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if we ever gave you direction on that, Greg, so.
No, I.
I know we talked about it, but.
I know we cleaned it, cleaned it right off.
Okay. I think you indicated they want it gone.
That's right.
Okay, next week Jessica will be, bring the contract for the duct cleaning and she'll get busy on finding out about the painting and maybe get a bid together for it. And the carpet is on the state.
Okay.
If you're going through scrubs, you better get them.
Mm-hmm. You might get that truck before they get here. They're busy. Yeah. But you get on the, get on the calendar now for three months from now.
Right, right.
If that's what you're looking for.
Okay.
But we want to get the paint and stuff done.
Yeah, well, we've got the duct, ductwork's probably.
That'll be 30 days by the time. But hopefully the bids will get in by the time the ductwork's done and then.
Okay.
Okay. Greg, do you want to give a informal report on what Nick, or just wait till we get the report?
I'm going to give it to you already.
Okay.
He's going to write it up and give, and you got, you got some more.
Okay, so.
I don't want to put words in his mouth.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, we'll, we'll look forward to that. But we did have a mold expert go through locks and also the Carnegie Building today. So that's where Greg's been. Okay. Do we have anything else?
I think so. Pie.
Pie? Okay.
Mango.
Motion to stand in recess until 4:30 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This was.
Telegram for mango. Telegram.
Candygram.
Was it a candygram? Piegram. Piegram for mango.